Good evening. My apologies, but welcome to the January 8th, 2020 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're delighted to have each of you with us tonight, like extend a happy new year to one and all. We ask Ms. La Magna this time to review our procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available in the front of the room on the table to my right. All of the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted on the bulletin board. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission during the business meeting. The yellow forms are located next to Assistant City Clerk Ms. Allison Brown. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Items on the agenda for first reading usually do not allow for public participation. However, there are some instances where citizens are allowed to speak on first reading items when they consider public hearings. Items on the agenda for second reading are open for public hearing, and citizens may speak at the designated time. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. All citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two and a half minute clock on the monitor above and directly in front of you will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number thirteen is the public comment form, and it will convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach a lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article two, section sixty-two thirty-eight of the city code of ordinances reads as follows: It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, but to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action calculated to disrupt such meeting, order refused to obey any ruling of the presiding officer for such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence your cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Gilliland?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here. We'll now have the invocation led by Commissioner Traeger, the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Henry.
Heavenly Father, at the beginning of this new year, bless us and give us insight and courage to face the new year. May this year be a one of happiness and health and good achievements for everyone. Bless all those people who are in our thoughts and overseas. Help us avoid all the turmoil in the world that seems to be right now. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the November twentieth, twenty nineteen, regular city commission meeting.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland. We'll take a second from Commissioner Traeger. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. Now move on to our agenda approval. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item nine A, nine B, nine C, and nine D are going to be continued with the request of the applicant. Nine E has been pulled as requested. Yeah. Motion approved, and then?
Second.
All right, we have a motion with those changes from Commissioner Gilliland. Take a second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Moving on, we have no presentations this evening, so we're going to move on to item number seven, which is public comments by people addressing the city commission. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. My first speaker is Ted Horedeki, speaking on item eight B.
Eight B.
Eight B, I'm sorry.
Eight B.
Hi, my name's Ted Horedeki, one thirteen Braddock Avenue. I'm a retired senior citizen, and I'm referring to the payment on the golf course. The golf courses are looking good. I was out there today. My game's not getting any better, but the courses are looking good. And my question is, when I golf out there as a resident of Daytona, I know we put a lot of money into the course, there is no discount for Daytona residents unless you buy a package. And the average package say $2,000. Well, I don't do $2,000 a year in golfing. So, an example, back in September, I golf there, I paid $3.50 for capital improvements, which is what I also pay taxes for capital improvements, and then they charge me a summer green fee. So I feel like I'm getting kinda... The taxes are going there, it's a municipal course, and yet, when I go there, and now I pay snowbird rates. But yet, I go there all year round. I'm not, you know, I'm not crazy. I don't play four or five times a week. But in the summer, I mean, sometimes I'm the only guy out there. But now that the snowbirds are here, I gotta pay snowbird rates. And I get hit twice on the capital improvements, and I just don't think... I think it's an oversight. So I called around Boca Raton, Tampa, Illinois, California, Arizona, and most municipal courses do give discounts to the residents, and they give them a little off on the green fees. But a $3.50 green fee, capital improvements, when tax is also for the city, I just feel it's unfair, because I know seniors, they don't have $2,000 to give out, because first off, they're not gonna play that much golf. But when they do want to go out, they want to go to the municipal course, but it seems like, you know, you're getting hit twice. And that's it. I don't know who, you know, decides all that, but...
I saw your email personally, and I saw your posts in social media about this item. I don't have a whole lot of insight or thought about it. It's not... This is the first I've heard of it, so I don't...
Yeah. I know they've done a lot of comparison shopping as to what the other municipal courses, you know, Riverbend and Cypress Head in particular, and, you know, we were competitive with theirs. And I think it's more a matter of market that there's an oversupply of golf courses around here, and, you know, you just can't charge what is a rate that will allow you to make your ends meet. You know, also, the capital, you know, we aren't putting capital from tax dollars in the golf course, that's from proceeds from the sale of the LPGA golf course. So the capital improvement fund is just that, something in terms of the long-term sustainability of that golf course, that we don't have to dip into the tax.
But I'd just say, I pay for the capital improvements twice, taxes and when I golf there.
But you're not paying for them through taxes, is what I'm telling you. The capital improvements that we've made out there were from the proceeds from the sale of the LPGA golf course. They're not coming out of...
Well, I read up on LPGA course out there. If I'm a member there, and I bring another, somebody on there to play, they get 20% off on the fees, the golf there, right?
Yeah, I have no idea.
I have no idea either. Or golf is on the whole net for a month. I have no idea what they're... Yeah, every course is gonna be different, because you got courses that are private, and you got public courses. And typically, the city course will be cheaper than your LPGA course anyhow.
It's half, it's half when you pay LPGA.
Yeah. And the course doesn't... All we're trying to do is be sure the course pays its cost of operating. That's all it's doing. And the fees are pretty much what they have to be to be able to break even.
Okay. Well, sir, are you talking about the Daytona Beach court or LPGA?
No, no, Daytona.
Okay, he's talking about our course. Yeah, all right. But, you know, I know that there are some individuals on the leisure services board who have had concerns about those fees as well, who, when we had a golf course, there were some concerns there, so it might be something we want to look at.
Well, the thing is, I know seniors that actually, you know, they're not gonna come in here and tell you they don't have money to go golf.
Yeah.
Because they're, you know, they have pride, you know?
Do we offer resident discounts for any other services with leisure services?
They actually can buy an annual card and play golf annually with it if you're a resident here like yourself.
And it's a substantial amount off, on the $2,000, you get like $800 off.
Yeah.
But I know a lot of seniors, they don't, they're not gonna come out with two grand.
We had a bad experience with when we had a very, very lowly, low-priced annual fee opportunity for residents, and basically, you couldn't get a tee time on a Saturday morning, a Sunday morning, because they just booked them all out. And, you know, and then ninety... Half the time, they wouldn't show up. This is back when Cameron was running the golf.
Right.
And the recommendation at that point was to eliminate the program. And what they did was they took it back to the analysis, figure out what it would cost for it to pay for itself, and that's the fee that they charge now. So anything, if we reduce that price, we would have to use property taxes to subsidize golf for the residents.
Yeah. So somebody's keeping an eye on the numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks. Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak, speaking on item eight F.
Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. Yay, 2020. So I am very supportive of the Josie Rogers House items. It's such a good thing. We're gonna be moving forward with the utilization of this building. I think a lot of times in our city, a lot of gorgeous buildings end up having to get torn down simply because they were not utilized continuously, so yeah, good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was my final speaker for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. This motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine, which is the public hearings. Item number nine A, the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Consolidated Temoca Parcel F. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with chapter one sixty-three, part two Florida statutes, adopting amendments to a future land use map, changing the future land use designation of one hundred and twenty plus or minus acres of property located on the south side of Granada Boulevard, east of Remo Ridge Road, and approximately two miles west of Interstate ninety-five, from low intensity urban to mixed use, and amending neighborhood policy B to allow additional dwelling units and reduce non-residential entitlements on the property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date, and at the request of the applicant, it's been asked to be continued to the March fourth city commission meeting.
Move to continue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Item number nine B is the Consolidated Temoca Parcel F rezoning to plan development. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone nine hundred and ninety plus or minus acres of property generally located on the south side of Granada Boulevard, east of Remo Ridge Road, and approximately two miles west of Interstate ninety-five, from Volusia County A two Rural Agriculture, RC Resource Board, and City PDG Plan Development General to City PDG Plan Development General District. Approving the Consolidated Temoca Parcel F Plan District Agreement with Consolidated Temoca Land Company, authorizing the property to be developed as a mixed-use project with approximately twenty-four hundred residential units and three hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred square feet of commercial area, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the planned district agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date, and at the request of the applicant, this to be continued to the March fourth city commission meeting.
Move to continue.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Gilliland. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine C. It is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Lago Verde Large Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting a large scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with chapter one sixty-three, part two Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation from level one residential to mixed use for sixty-two point nine plus or minus acres of property located northeast of the Williamson Boulevard Strickland Range Road intersection, amending the future land use element neighborhood S to reduce the maximum floor area ratio for the property referenced above from three point zero to zero point two five, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date, and on behalf of the applicant, they've asked to have this item continued to the January twenty-second.
Move to continue.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Traeger. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion also carries seven zero.
Okay, item number nine D is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone sixty-two point nine plus or minus acres of property located northeast of the intersection of Williamson Boulevard and Strickland Range Road from Volusia County R two Urban Single Family Residential to City PDG Plan Development General District. Approving the Lago Verde Plan District Agreement permitting development of the property with mixed use, subject to conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the planned district agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date, and the applicant has asked this item be continued to the January twenty-second city commission meeting.
Move to continue.
Second.
We have a motion to continue and a second. Motion from Commissioner Traeger and second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Item number nine E has been pulled from the agenda tonight, so we're gonna move on to item ten, which is our administrative items. Item number ten A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division rezoning First Amendment to the Mercuri Dormitory Plan District Agreement. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Mercuri Dormitory Plan District Agreement to allow additional uses including a foster care transitional housing facility located within the Mercuri Dormitory Plan Development located at eight twenty-eight George W. Ingram Boulevard, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Traeger. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for January twenty-second. Moving on to item ten B, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division rezoning ISB La Quinta Plan District Agreement. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone six point five plus or minus acres of property located at West International Speedway Boulevard and Interstate ninety-five from T four Taurus Office Retail to PDG Plan Development General District, approving the ISB La Quinta Plan District Agreement to allow for the redevelopment of the existing La Quinta Inns and Suites, Wing House Bar and Grill, and new development of an additional hotel, drive-through restaurant, and accessory parking garage, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Gilliland. Do we have any questions from the commission? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for January twenty-second. Moving on to item ten C, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Land Development Code Text Amendment Parking Exemptions. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code, amending section six point two point B point four to clarify parking exemption areas for properties abutting Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for January twenty-second. Moving on to item ten D, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division rezoning Development... I'm sorry, rezoning Development Code Text Amendment Parking Exemptions. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code... Ah, that's the wrong title. This is Development and Administrative Services Planning Division rezoning for the Hoshkus House Historic Overlay. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code applying the Historic Overlay Classification to the Hoshkus House located at one thousand South Peninsula Drive, adopting design guidelines for the site, directing the local register of the historic places to be updated to include the site, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Gilliland. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for January twenty-second. Moving on to item ten E, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division rezoning ERAU Bellevue and Clyde Morris Plan District Agreement. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone ten point two plus or minus acres of property located in the southeast quadrant of Clyde Morris Boulevard and Bellevue Avenue from SFR five Single Family Residential five to PDG Plan Development General District, approving the ERAU Bellevue and Clyde Morris Plan District Agreement with Emory Riddle Aeronautical University, Inc., authorizing development of additional buildings, uses, and parking to support further expansion of the ERAU campus, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for January twenty-second. Our final item, item ten F, is Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Land Development Code Text Amendment, amend articles three, five, and eleven. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the city land development code, creating section three point four point DD to establish procedures and standards for the review of reasonable accommodation requests by special magistrate, amending sections three point three point E point three point D and E to provide for public hearings on reasonable accommodation requests, amending tables three point two Summary Table of Development Procedures, three point three point E point one Required Public Hearings, three point three E point three Public Hearing Notice Timing Requirements, and section three point three H relating to decision-making bodies for consistency with the LDC amendments relating to reasonable accommodation requests, creating section five point five Amending Definition of Household Living Uses in eleven point three, and amending definitions of dwelling unit and family in section eleven point five to revise LDC restrictions on family occupancy of dwelling units, amending section five point one and five point three point B point three point F for consistency with amendments relating to family occupancy above, providing for conflicts, codification, and severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, a second from Commissioner Delgado.
Bob, I got a question on this one. I was just having trouble following. It was, so currently, we're at two people, unrelated people, and then it was going to four, and it was going back to three, and many weren't like it, and then, so is this at three or four?
The version in front of you is three. And you're essentially correct in your summary. The original land development code, or the code currently provides, that no more than two unrelated persons constitute a family within a single-family dwelling unit. There was an earlier draft that went to the planning board that revised that definition to four unrelated persons. That ultimately got revised again, taken back to the planning board, and they rejected the alternative three unrelated persons. Also related to that was a change with the review process. So the original version that went to the planning board and was approved provided for a two-tier review, where the regional... the reasonable accommodation request application was determined by staff and then appealed up to the magistrate. Well, in the second draft that went to the planning board and was denied in terms of a recommendation to this commission, it provided for a one-tier review. They went straight to the magistrate. And I should add, there is a legal benefit, if you will, to having the one-tier review as opposed to the two-tier review, and that is, if you go straight to the magistrate, we provide a public hearing as opposed to a staff review, which is not a public hearing, and it becomes a quasi-judicial determination, and notice is provided to affected parties within a hundred and fifty-foot zone from the applicant's site. So there's some due process issues which are dealt with by the magistrate which can't be done at administrative level. So I would recommend, from a legal standpoint, the one-tier review by the magistrate, which is then appealed up into the court system.
That's what's in this...
That's what is in this draft as well, yes.
One-tier review of three people?
Correct.
Can you change the number of people, right?
Yes, you can.
Want to go back to two? Oh, God. Yeah. So we're at two now, and we have a serious problem with dormitory living in the city, and I would think we need to leave it at two. You know, I can, I can, I think we can live with three. I think we're gonna cause some problems in the beachside and some neighborhoods that have older, smaller houses with three, but try and put four people in a two-bedroom house is going to be a real problem. So, like I said, as a compromise, I'm willing to live with three, but no evidence of anything more than that. Can we control how many people are in there based on bedrooms? Is that a part of this?
That is not a part of this, and that's a more complicated question that relates to our building code. So there are some restrictions about the number of people based on the size of the building, but that's a building code issue, and it's actually quite broad under the building code, much more than the numbers we're considering here.
Mm-hmm. Those dormitories now, you can put two twin beds and two bedrooms in a house for people if they're students. So I don't see a problem with that. Right, and that's what we have trouble with today in neighborhoods, because the people who are owners in those neighborhoods have, you know, you got four cars now, you know, and we're not... Four is kind of a lower end. You know, I got five and six people living in houses, you know, in my zone that are creating all kinds of havoc, both in, you know, Bayberry in particular, with all the cars on the street. So, you know, I don't, like I said, I can live with three, but I don't, I wouldn't want to go any higher than that.
And regarding this, we still have the condition that, if I'm thinking correctly, you cannot have constant turnover, correct?
That's correct, and that was another addition we made to the code. So under the definition of family, we would have the number restriction, but we'd also have a clause in there that provides if you have more than six turnovers of occupants within a twelve-month period, you'll be essentially presumed not to be a family.
And how would we know?
You'd have to have evidence of some sort, either from witnesses or from observations, which would be presented to the code board or the magistrate on a code violation case.
And so we want to stay with three? That's where we're at right now, with three people? Or are we considering?
That's what he suggested.
Well, he wants to stay at two.
I want to stay at two. I'm not so sure I don't agree with him, but...
So, I mean, part of the reason...
It's such a problem now, to be wise. You know, if, you know, I'll take the beating I'm gonna get for going to three, but, you know, there's no way.
So, part of the reason this came about is because of, we had a lot of complaints in zone three in a particular area, so that's kind of how we got to this point. And I don't think they'd be pleased with four at all. They would feel as though nothing has changed. So two is fantastic. Three is doable, but for me, it's the keeping an eye on that turnover that becomes important to me. And is there any wiggle room there? Can it be interpreted to be bunk beds in rooms and whatnot? Can people interpret that, since we have two rooms and four bunk beds, that that's okay?
This is strictly, the regulation has a strat, it is just a count of persons. It doesn't matter whether they're on bunk beds or on a couch or whatever it may be.
Okay.
And there's some type of certification that they have to do to let us know that they're even doing this type of...
Okay, so this is the second part of what's being proposed, and that has to do with the reasonable accommodation section. So there is a standard which is established in the proposed code for whether or not that reasonable accommodation gets granted by special magistrate. And one of the factors which can be considered, if it's a commercial operator, is whether or not they're qualified to provide that service, and that includes whether or not they have experience in the area, whether they have the certifications from the state and the proper licenses, and people involved are, you know, properly trained as well. So, that is one factor among several that the magistrate must consider in granting the accommodation or denying it.
Mr. Jagger, I have a question about the definition, and maybe I'm being pedantic, but what if it's, what if I move in a, my girlfriend and her two children? Do all three people have to be, do all three people have to be related, or how would that, how would that work? Because obviously, in that scenario, I'm not married, or adopted, or related by blood, but that's a relationship that most people would think would be relatively common, you know, two unmarried people with children, or children from different relationships. I have my son, my girlfriend has two children from another, you know, how in that scenario do the relationships have to be, is that be a unanimous relationship? Or, you know, are we fine with defining it somewhat differently? Because I think that's a, that's a way in which you could have four people in a house where you wouldn't necessarily have everyone related by blood or marriage, and depending on how you define those relationships, one person may be not related to any of the other people, but one person in that scenario.
No, that's true, and actually, I'd probably defer to staff as to how they're currently interpreting the code. That's an issue they interpret commonly, even under the definition with two persons. But, but there is an anomaly, if you will, in the way the code is applied, in that there's an unlimited number of related persons that can live together, but there's a limited number of unrelated persons that can live together. So, there is a bit of an inconsistency there, and the reason is, and there's a justification for it, is that cities tend to want to encourage family occupation of single-family units.
Is there a way of looking at it from a rental perspective, so that regard, that it's divided by the number of people who are on the lease, or who are adults that are expected to pay, or, I mean, and should we maybe define adults as differently when it comes to the unrelated persons? I mean, I'm just thinking, if that's what we're really trying to do, you know, that might be another way, another way to look at it, either a child having their older parents living with them, or having their younger children living with them. Obviously, that's not, that's certainly an arrangement no one in the city would be opposed to, but if you have, you know, four or five members of the same fraternity living together, I understand the concern there. But I would think that there's a way to draft that without, I guess what I'm saying is, the concept of family is ever-changing, and I mean, we've experienced difficulty, you know, defining that. I think it's a, so that's what I was concerned with, is when we talk about what constitutes related, unrelated persons, you know, that, I don't know, is there maybe a more clean way to do it, so that you don't have a scenario like I posited, where you have, you know, four people living together in what would look like a very common living relationship, but might end up with people who are not, under this definition, related by blood law or marriage, or whatever.
Thank you, if I may, Dennis Marza, Planning Director. The scenario you described, a mother, two children, and you, you're not joining, your boyfriend living there, the mother, two children would be considered one unit-
Okay.
-as a family unit, so you would be the second, second person in that, in that living situation.
All right. So, you don't need, you're not looking, you're not analyzing each person's relationship with the other people in the house?
No, no, it's, we're looking at that, that family unit.
Okay. So, everyone in that family is considered one unit?
Correct. If it was a mother and father and six kids and a grandmother, it's all part of one unit, one family unit.
Because there's no limit when it's a family.
Correct.
The limit comes when they're not family.
Correct.
That's good.
Mm-hmm.
And then, just to be clear, we're still sticking with the concept of, I mean, right now, it's going to impact some people in Zone 3, correct? Do they have a certain amount of time to comply?
This requirement would be effective immediately upon adoption.
And there's no grandfathering in? If you exist right now and it's not legal, it's still?
I'm aware of maybe one case where we've granted an accommodation, so anyone who's currently operating without an accommodation being granted would be in violation of our code.
And then, what is the penalty for that? What is the penalty for being in violation?
The code violation would be our standard penalties provided under 162.
Okay, and so, so that I'm clear, I keep thinking there's a misunderstanding that once you're given a violation, you have 30 days to comply. Is that true? Is that discretion of the code?
There's some discretion involved, but the typical scenario involves a 30-day notice period to come into compliance.
But that is at the discretion of the officer?
It is at the discretion of the officer, and depending on the type of violation, whether it's irreparable or not.
Okay. And so, are we going to notify people who we believe right now, and we know who they are? Are we going to notify them and let them, alert them? This is the case, the rules are now here, we are enforcing them, and it's not, in fact, 30 days. It's whatever we decide. If it's offensive enough, we want it out?
That's a question more for the manager, but you certainly have that discretion.
Are we going to notify them, or just say, the rule is now here and they don't know, and then?
I think the point, when you adopt the rule, we'd be happy to make distribution to those that we know about.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And in letting them know, I mean, there's so many people to let know. Is there going to be a timeline in which they have to comply?
This would just be a courtesy. It's not a part of the enforcement process. If they, if they don't take some action, positive action, then they come into enforcement for the code effort.
Okay, I don't know if I asked that correctly. I know, you know, there's a phrase that says ignorance of the law is no excuse, so, so if they don't know, and yet we've done this courtesy little thing.
If it's a courtesy, it's not a notice of non-compliance.
Correct.
But when they get a notice, that's when they have a 30-day clock running.
Okay.
In other words, if I give them pamphlets today, and I go back next week and say, "Look, I gave it to you last week, you know, I might have to give you a notice of violation now," then that's when the clock runs.
Okay.
So, I will tell you an example of something.
I hope I did that right, Chief.
I had somebody say to me that they'd be willing to pay for the code violation, because the code violation was actually cheaper, they'd be making more money just continuing the activity, and they didn't mind paying the code violation, because they, in fact, had 30 days. And so, I questioned, is 30 days the norm? And I found out, 30 days is not the norm. It's whatever the officer decides at that particular time. Is that correct? If they decide 24 hours, it can be 24 hours.
No.
What is it?
No.
Is it 30 days?
Thirty.
Can you, I don't know.
It really depends on the violation. If it's a type of violation that can be immediately cured, the officer will typically give reasonable notice, and so, I think 30 days may be typical for some violations, but if it's something that can be immediately cured, like a sign in the yard-
Okay.
-it'd be 24 hours notice.
Okay, so it flexes with the offense?
Yes. I see Officer Jessmer behind you making, did you have anything to add to that?
I was just agreeing with you, sir. I was looking at the chief here.
Okay, very good.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure about that, because the idea was that they would go ahead and continue breaking the law, because they had 30 days to comply, collect whatever revenues, and it was okay, because the citation amount was small enough, and they would just be dismissed anyway?
And now, these, of course, are a little different. These are, these fines, you know, would run, you know, to the property. They would go up to $15,000 and higher, depending on the value of the property, or the type of property. If it's a commercial property, it would be higher, $25,000, I believe. So, I've heard that comment before about, we'll just pay for the fine, but the, and the reality is, is these liens are real, they attach to the property, they don't disappear without the board's consent, or without going back for a lien review to the magistrate or the code board, and they do escalate over time if the property's not brought into compliance. And we have other options, too. We can always get an injunction through the court system. That's another option for us. If the fines aren't working, we can seek judicial relief.
And I would think repeat offenders, we would take note of that, and maybe have to do something different.
The repeat offenders do not get the same notice. They are brought directly to code board or magistrate for findings of violation.
Good.
This goes to the property owner, right?
Yes, to the property owner or the tenant.
So, if the tenant was a renter, would the property owner be informed as well? Because I could see situations like we've had before.
Yes, that is our process, I believe. Chief, let me know if I'm saying anything correct, you probably know better than me, but I believe the process is that both the tenant and the owner are noticed, because the property is ultimately leaned.
Both get notified and paid for.
I'm sorry, can you come to the microphone?
Correct, you're pretty pleased, chief. The big thing on it, like you said, the liens definitely carry some weight, because when they go to sell that property, they can't sell it until that lien is satisfied. So, that, we're going to get our money. So, most of them have realized over the last couple of years, since we took over code, it's got more teeth, and people are getting anything to compliance. Before, the norm was, hey, I'll just blow it off. Now, everybody sees how serious it's getting, they're paying the fines. They don't want their property, liens on their property, know we're going to come after them, we're going to aggressively follow up. And you have a few offenders that are just repeat offenders, and those are the ones you just can't negotiate with, when they want to try to mitigate and get the fees down, you just can't, you just got to be hard and firm with them, and fair, but it's gotten a lot better. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we've been making so many cases, probably 75% more than we've done in years past. I mean, the numbers are, and that's all self-initiated proactive stuff. We're all over it, so.
And the city attorney's office is foreclosing on these things as well.
Yes.
We're actively searching for properties which are criteria-
We work very well with the state attorney's office, and everybody seems to be working together, and things are getting accomplished. And in the end, you're going to have people actually taking care of their properties and doing what they need to do.
I have a question, chief, and I don't know if you can answer this, but we're talking now about how many people are in a house.
Yeah.
I know a property where people are renting out sheds in their yard.
You can't do that.
Exactly.
Yeah. We, we get complaints, and we follow up. We're, not only we're proactive, but we're actually following up a lot of complaints, too. So, if we get a complaint like that, we're going there, we're addressing it. I mean, it's not blatant, as you would think, with that, but it does, I'm sure it does happen. And you can't do that, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
I have one more question. And I did talk to Mr. Sykes about this, but pardon me. So, it's according to how offensive the act is, right?
Mm-hmm.
But we are giving people opportunities to get it together. Like, I don't want to overcoat people-
No.
...that we know cannot afford certain things.
Absolutely not. The goal is to get compliance, not find people, and we're working above and beyond with people to help them out. Repeat offenders, not so much, because they want to laugh and say, the city's not going to do nothing, and when you hit them in the pocketbook, that's the only way to get, or in their wallets, that's the only way to get their attention. And when they realize that, they're afraid, and they're going to get on board. But the average people, we just, if somebody needs help, we'll work with them, bend over backwards, extend, 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 and we're not out there to hurt people, we're out here to just get people in compliance. And the ones that are, that are doing this, most of them have money, and they're just greedy, and they want to be, you know, slum lords, and they want to just take advantage of their tenants also. So, that's the ones we really want to go after, not the innocent mom-pop that's trying to keep their property up at the, I know officers that have helped people, when they like, help them fix the violations right on the spot, so there weren't violations anymore. So, the goal is not to hurt people, it's to get the bad people into compliance.
And we're giving, when we're out, are we giving information about, to these people who have problems with their property, and where they can go to get some help? Not the bad people?
I understand, yeah, we're working with the things that you can do, and as long as you're making, you know, there's some grants that you can apply for, there's social services that can help you out. I don't know the individual, I know there are some that I remember seeing, that the word is getting out to try to help them. Here's where you can go to get help. Do you have a family member we could contact? You know, you find a lot of people that, you know, that especially the elderly, they have family members out of state, so you can reach out to them and let them know what's going on. We've done that before, too, just to put them, hey, these are some issues here, they're very minor, but you can fix them. And, I mean, I don't think we've ever, ever, ever hurt somebody that tried to, financially to try to fix their properties. I mean-
So, Captain Lee's not here right now, but he and I were working on a little program. We're doing research right now to address just that. There's a program in Orlando, where it's called Rebuild Together, and they actually have a group of people who go out and work and do the grant research, get the funds, get the monies together to help people who cannot afford it based on need. So, we're right now doing, we're doing some research on it, we've been working on it for a couple of months.
A lot of it's working with our private contacts we have with businesses that we know, and real estate people that have money and business that want to give back, we can hook them up with them. A lot of stuff, the churches volunteer, have groups that go out and volunteer, a lot of college kids on their spring break are coming back and doing refurbishments on houses to get people in code. That's happened also. But by no means are we out to hurt people, anybody. It's not about the money, it's just about getting in compliance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My, kind of, my other thought, going back to this definition of family, I always think, I really think maybe four people would be the right number, and here's why, with some caveat. Two couples living together in a two-bedroom, two-bathroom house doesn't strike me as overcrowded by any means, but it wouldn't be allowed under this definition if none of them are married to each other. So, you know, that's not a terribly uncommon living situation, especially if you think back to like, you know, like, I'm thinking about like Emory Riddle, and like the dorm type of off-campus living that might be some of the problems we're trying to address. And the other thing is, I mean, under this definition, we don't really consider like, you know, long-term overnight guests or something, where one person might live somewhere else, but stay at that house a lot. You know, if you're basing it on cooking, eating, living, and sleeping together on a 30-day or monthly or longer basis, I mean, you know, there are people who might have their own separate home, who just, for whatever reason, are staying with a significant other for a long period of time, that might run afoul of this, but that doesn't really, and I don't know that it makes any difference if they have another place to live, but again, I think we, I wouldn't want to make it impossible for two couples to share a house together. I don't think that's an excessive use of the resources, even though there might be four cars. And I don't think that that's, that's a problem, but under this definition, I don't see that would be allowed. So, I don't know whether we talk about, if they have somewhere else, they live, then that's, that's a different situation, like they're just overnight guests, or something like that. But then that also gets into enforceability and privacy, and, you know, asking people what goes on inside their home, I think, might be a policing issue. I think you get into some real constitutional protections there, when you start trying to inquire about someone's living arrangements beyond this, what's externally visible. So, that's, that's my concern with three people. I mean, I get the, I get the concern about, you know, having, my brother went to school in New York, and I think he lived with like 25 people in a place the size of a closet. I mean, I mean, people do crazy stuff, and I've seen, you know, in Daytona, we have a problem, we have, you know, families living in single rooms, so I certainly know that's a problem. But I think under this rule, we would make a lot of housing situations that are not offensive to be a code violation, unless we consider, you know, the four, making either four unrelated people, or drafting a definition that treats, you know, that maybe, maybe it has to do with number of houses, I mean, sorry, number of bedrooms, and number of sleeping arrangements, or something like that. If it's cars, it's a problem, maybe it has to go by cars, but I'm not sure that this current definition wouldn't penalize behavior that we probably, as a commission, would accept as reasonable. I don't know.
But you're going to fix one person's problem and create a thousand more problems for your constituents, because there's going to be, this happens all over your neighborhood. You know, I mean, I don't like the idea of going to three. Like I said, this is a problem citywide right now. You know, this is not a solution to affordable housing. This is about trying to, you know, keep our neighborhoods and neighborhoods, and not many business districts. This is why we've got a problem with short-term rentals. You know, I, you know, I understand where you're coming from, and you've got a really big heart, you know, I agree with that from my heart. But the reality is, this is a problem today, we're going to make it worse by going to three, and we're going to blow up and be a disaster in every neighborhood in the city if we go any higher.
Well, I think we can also, then, we just have to adjust. I'm not, I'm not necessarily saying I want, I want to avoid the same outcome you want to avoid. I'm just not sure that the way this is drafted, I think we could probably draft it in a way that accomplishes and addresses my concern, but also prevents the concern that you're aware, just by, by-
Making that leap.
Yeah, by, by looking at, you know, what, you know, what is, is marriage different than a long-term relationship that people aren't married in? Are we, you know, those kinds of things that I think about are probably, we could probably draft around it, if we talk about, you know, how much time someone spends in the house, or, I think there's a way to draft around it, so we wouldn't create a problem with two, with a couple counting as two people, whereas a family, a married couple would only count as one under this definition. I don't know that we can't just draft around it. That's why I'm bringing it up, and it may not be that big of a problem. And again, I'm not saying that I want to create, you know, crowded housing situations, And again, I'm not saying that I want to create, you know, crowded housing situations. I'm not saying that, I'm not advocating a different outcome, Rob. I'm on the same page as you about the outcome. I'm just saying, I think this definition could be changed or worked on so that we don't have the problem that I'm talking about. That's all. I'm just, I think it just has to do with the definition. I think we can avoid the outcome. I just want to think about it and put my perception of what the drafting creates here. And again, I mean, our legal team, I'm sure, can come up with a solution to this that affects what we want.
But this is first reading. So, Bob, you changed the definition for second reading and left it at three, but created a definition that addressed Aaron's issue about two couples. Would that constitute a big enough change? Should it would have to go back to planning board?
I don't think so. I think we've given sufficient notice as to what we're dealing with. So, I don't think we'd have to go back to planning board for what I'll refer to as a minor change. We did go back to planning board, obviously, before because the changes got to be more significant with regard to the appellate process. So, you know, the question is whether we've given the public sufficient notice of what we're voting on. And I think we have in this case. To address Commissioner Delgado's concerns, though, that it is a rather complicated, if not impossible, drafting task to define what a couple is, for instance. Yes, we've tried to follow the models which other jurisdictions have used. And it's easier to enforce to have a number as opposed to defining a number of people per rooms. That becomes an enforcement problem as well. So, it is, it's a difficult area to regulate in to begin with. Obviously, there are a lot of constitutional protections with regard to the family unit. And in addition, we've got issues under the ADA and other federal laws in terms of treating everyone equally that has disabilities. So, we're trying to be mindful of all those requirements in this regulation and to apply it neutrally in each of those situations. So, we can go back to the drawing board if you'd like. But I can tell you, we've looked at a lot of options. We've looked at the options of trying to limit it to a certain number of people per bedroom.
Yeah, people by bedroom is not easier than this?
And there are some legal issues with that. I'd be glad to, you know, brief you more specifically on that if you'd like, if that's the direction you'd like to go.
Probably a proof issue, I think.
Okay.
Pardon?
It's probably difficult to prove.
Difficult to prove is one of the issues, right? So, at any rate, this is...
Well, I'll speak with you about it afterwards. I don't mean to monopolize it. Just to explain, that's what I thought. I thought maybe a combination of definitions, that rooms and people might be the solution. But, I mean, I'll be happy to hear why that's, you know, what a quagmire that is.
Let me talk to you privately unless everybody likes to be briefed. I might have to call for support from my staff on that as well, so.
Mr. Jack, how long have we been working on this? Do you remember when we started this?
It's been quite some time. Many, many months.
It's been many, many months that we've been working on this, right?
Right. And having gone back to planning board a couple of times has contributed to that timeline as well.
So, I've got some large houses in the west side of town that are four or five. I got one that's a six-bedroom house on Pelican Bay Drive that has put six Riddle kids in there. Now, we've gotten them out because they're in Pelican Bay and they can't get barcodes to get through the gate. And then we won't let them through the gate when they, you know, from that time. So, you know, that one we were able to resolve. I know there's another one in Bayberry that's been a big problem. So, the one with the number of bedrooms, you know, you still got to have an upper limit on it. And I don't think that upper limit can be more than three. So, I understand where you're going, but I think it needs more of that definition of, you know, to try and figure out how to define it in a way that two couples would be allowed as opposed to going to a number of bedroom or increasing the number of people.
Yeah, I would have just said like...
What is a couple? I mean, I...
I would have just said, I would have just said it's no more than two people, no more than two adults per bedroom up to a maximum of this much with no more than, you know, that's how I would have combined it. Just in my first blush, I would have said in that situation, no more than, you know, four unrelated people except for, you know, then I would have looked at the bedroom situation. I would just kind of combine the two. I would have said upward bound based on the number of bedrooms, like, you know, X number of people or X is the number of bedrooms less one. And then I would have just said, you know, something to do with a couple counts as one person. You know, something like that. But, I mean, again, I'll listen to Rob. I didn't realize that had been tried, that, and I would have thought like Bayberry can't, I would have thought they maybe had like HOA or something rules that would be on top of that.
Their HOA rules are not very strong and there's no penalties associated with it.
Because an HOA can be more strict than this, correct? An HOA could pass rules, okay.
They're subject to federal law as well.
But subject to federal law, they can be more strict than we, if they want to. They can impose greater restrictions. All right.
They watch it, everything.
Are you okay with moving it forward tonight and then in the next two weeks, working with legal to...
Yeah, and I mean, I get, like, things like cars and things like that, I completely understand, you know. And again, that's what I was thinking where, you know, you could say the cars are the number of adults minus one or whatever the restriction, you know. I get the concern, like, in Bayberry where they park on the streets, I get the concern. Yeah, I'm fine moving it forward. I just wanted us to think about that and just make sure that we were comfortable with that possible outcome. And if we can't draft around it, then we just have to count on reasonable enforcement.
All right.
Please don't bring back a ninety-page definition.
No, no, I'm not going to draft.
And keep in mind, as far as parking, we do have regulations on parking. You have to park on paved surfaces or designated areas for parking. You can't just park in the grass. And of course, we have rules for on-street parking as well, depending on the neighborhood. So, it's not necessarily free-for-all on parking, depending on the number of people in the unit.
It is in Ran Champion and Bayberry. They, it's not uncommon for them to situation with, because they've got so many rental properties, that they've got cars on both sides of the street and you can't get a fire truck down the street. You know, or it's, somebody's having a party, you know, you've got somebody stuck in the middle with cars going in the same direction. Somebody's got to back out of that mess to get, let the other person by. Cars is a huge issue in this because they end up on the street.
Right, I agree.
The Hoon Holly is another one. There's just so many of them. It is a major problem in those neighborhoods. Okay, so we are in agreement with moving this forward and then trying to work it out.
Yeah, if we can't, we can't. But yeah, I just wanted to think about it.
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second.
Some of them.
Those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries seven-zero.
The public hearing is set for January twenty-second.
All right, commission comments and inquiries from the city commission. City manager, city attorney will commence with Commissioner Henry.
Good afternoon and Happy New Year. January sixteenth, the police department will be having a safety training for women from the hours of six to eight. Would like for all of you to come out. They're going to be talking about safety and things to be aware of when you're out and if you're out by yourselves. And if you have a daughter or a young daughter, please bring them as well. And that is January sixteenth from six to eight. This afternoon, I had the opportunity, well, let me talk about Neighborhood Watch last night and some of the concerns that we had over at the Neighborhood Watch, which was a very good Neighborhood Watch meeting last night, which was followed up by a code enforcement walk this morning. So, the two came together really well this month. Is there a program? And if, I'd like to see if there is a program for feral cats to be neutered and released and trapped and released. Do we have any programs like that available? And how can I get that information to get it back to...
I think, Chief, you've got some people working on that, spay and neuter.
Yes. Correct, please, Chief. We have a program in place that does grant money that covers the spay and neuter. I have one gentleman that comes in, I think he's a, I think he might even be a volunteer at this point in time. But he's sitting technically on the books with the city. He's got an ID. And he's a cat lover, knows all about cats. And he goes out twenty hours a week and picks cats up and does all that along with our two animal patrol officers.
Okay, good.
So, there's a program definitely in place for that.
We've definitely got a feral cat issue in our area. I know I have one even at my own home. I don't know.
I'll have them go up there. I know they're taking care of the people.
But over in the Sunset community over there, they have a feral cat. And so, they just want to know if there are programs.
If you have them call my office, we'll take care of it.
And Dizzle is actually working on that issue, but not the issue of whether or not we have programs built for that.
We do have a program. And we also have a gentleman that, he's a volunteer, but he goes out and does all the feral cats. He's a cat lover, cat expert, and he comes in twenty hours a week. We actually got one of the old code enforcement trucks for him to use to go do all that with the cages. He's been great.
So, we did do, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you. So, we did do a code walk this morning. And I just want to thank code enforcement because they did such a wonderful job. They work really hard and it's great to get out there and really see how they're working in the community. And they'll be back again in March, back in Zone Five. But just thank you to code enforcement with the code walk today and addressing some of the issues that the residents had. I spoke with a principal that lives in my area. His school is not located there, but he lives there, him and some other people in my area. And they were talking about enrollment being down at the schools in Daytona Beach. And that people are younger couples and couples with young children, not younger couples, but couples with young children are not enrolling in the schools in Daytona Beach because of, they feel it's because Daytona Beach schools are not supported as much by local government. And so, I just want to make sure that we're on top of working to put programs in place so that people are not moving out of our community and our enrollment is not decreasing in our local schools. And so, that was one of the concerns, was that they felt that the schools were not supported enough by the local community. And so, enrollment is down considerably in schools in Volusia County area, but mainly in Daytona Beach.
Give us an example of something's happening in a different city that they're doing to support their schools that we're not doing in Daytona Beach?
Well, one of the big things that I know of is the teacher of the quarter program. And I know that we've been working on that and getting that going. Then you have to realize that our schools are probably a little more problematic because of the socioeconomic status of some of the students in the community. So, they have a lot more volunteerism at the schools in the other communities. Our schools are low in volunteerism. I did talk to the principal at, meet with the principal at Westside Elementary. And volunteerism is low, so he would love some more volunteers. And as you know, those two schools are potentially at risk for state takeover. So, that's a big issue when you talk about people moving into communities. One thing that I would like very much to do is, and I did talk to the city manager about this, is because Yvonne Scarlett is a cultural and educational center, what some communities are doing up north and it's coming down to Florida is they're putting book vending machines into their community centers. So, he's looking into that as an option for children. And I'm looking to partner with people or I'm looking for us to partner with certain people with putting some vending machines in YSG and in Midtown. And what book vending machines are is, it's a regular vending machine and leveled reading books are placed in those machines. And children can come up and get books. And they get the book and they get to keep it and it's free. And it gives them opportunities to have access to books and literacy. Literacy is a big problem in our local schools. It just is what it is. And I think that, too, is an issue as to why people are leaving because our literacy scores are so low.
So, the books are free from the vending machine?
It is. And then what you do is get sponsors to re-up the book.
Because I think Dolly Parton has that program where she gives out free books and things like that.
She does give them out. And I think hers is limited to a certain age.
Hers is different. It's zero to five. And you sign up and they mail it to your house. And that's another program that, you know, by supporting that, we support literacy and support our schools.
Could then when they get done with it, can they return it so that other kids can read them? Or they keep them?
They keep them because you want them to have a library. You want them to have a library at home with a book that they can always go back to.
That's an important part of it.
And they can read, yes. Is having a home library that they have access to books.
What I've learned recently is that libraries lend a lot of digital books, too, which I didn't know that. You can borrow digital books for free from libraries all over the country, which I had no idea about. So, if there was some way to give people the technology to do that, they would open themselves up to getting a ton of free books all over.
Absolutely.
I love that idea. I just didn't know it was more like a library.
I agree with that. Technology is an issue in our area.
It's an issue and it's also information because a lot of people have the internet. They can even access books on their cell phones. It's a matter of informing people about our own libraries. One of the things that I have tried to do in various places that I go and speak and talk to people about literacy. But our own libraries have access for kids to read books, hundreds and thousands of books. So, I agree.
Commissioner Henry, with regard to that school number, I went to a school board meeting. Did that include the virtual schools that kids are attending now or just breaking more to schools?
No, that did not include.
So, are people, do you think people are switching to the Volusia County kind of online system more and staying home?
Or moving out of areas where they have to, where their home school is in Daytona Beach. So, they're moving out of areas where those schools are because they'd rather be in schools with... I don't want to say...
At the bottom line, they would rather be in schools that have a higher school grade.
Right.
It really comes down to when a parent picks a school, they look at the schools around them and they look at the grades that the schools have. And if they are not B or A schools and sometimes C, then they move into areas where the schools are rated or graded according to that standard. And that's really what it is. And it is a major problem, and it is a major problem in our city for us to continue to attract families into our communities. Even if you go into Bayberry, which in LPGA, and the people who live in those communities, I found this, very often their kids do not go to Champion. They send them to different private schools and schools outside of the city so that they will receive a different type of an education from a different place. And so, it's one of the things I thought that as whoever the leadership at Champion was that they needed to really do a good job of trying to recruit those people to go to that school.
Champion have a gifted program, you know?
They do not.
And I, just to show my ignorance, but is there, what can the city do? I mean, to echo partly Rob's point, but if there's something other cities are doing that we're not doing, let's do it. But, I mean, how much can we, I mean, because I think that'd be the best, one of the best things we could do as a commission for Daytona is to, if we could find a way to improve our schools, it would solve a ton of problems. But what can we really, is there much that we can do as a...
Supporting programs like the mayor's literacy initiative, supporting programs like Dolly Parton. We have to create literacy and education as an important component of our overall community. I don't think other cities or other commissions are necessarily more committed. We just have to find a way to bring all of the, pool the resources towards the children and make the emphasis more about education. What she's suggesting as it relates to a digital library, articles strongly support the idea that a child who has a digital, has a library of their own, more inclined to be more successful in school. And they actually make more money. It's just proven it regardless of their socioeconomic background. Because the number-one thing that we can do for any kid as it relates to education is to enhance their reading skill, more so than even math. Schools have less trouble teaching math than they do teaching reading. So, anything that we can do to support literacy, I think, is paramount in trying to help address the issue.
I want to throw one more little tool in that. There's also a huge, kids are not sometimes going to school because they're having mental health issues. And they're being taken out of the schools as well. And they're staying at home because behavioral issues are really big right now. And so, that's another reason they're not going. So, if we could do something, if we're trying to find ways that we can help, yes, it's language skills. Definitely improving language skills, huge outcome there for mental health as well. But also working within the mental health component. So, I think there's actually funding there from the state at a state level for that.
Absolutely. But fundamentally literate children produce literate societies and literate communities. And that's something that we have to look at going forward. And who will be here, living here, who will be responsible for us as we move up in age? I'd like to have some fundamentally literate people caring for me and up here making decisions and that can read. Even talking to one of the local college professors, and she was saying that literacy was just down on the college level. That the writing, they don't write well, they don't read well. And that that's an issue even on the college level. So, if we can just combat it right here, just what we can do. Do I have all the answers? I don't have all the answers, but I do know that people are leaving our communities for better school areas. And I want the best and brightest to live in Daytona and want to want to be here and want to raise their families here and live here. So, that's part of my goal to me as a, just as a community, have an illiterate society. I think that that's everything that's on my list. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I think that ties into the equity issue that I've been talking about with Commissioner.
Yes, sir. Busy, busy, busy weekend coming up. And that segue from literacy also ties in with our Fresh Book Initiative that we as a city do, doing, that's this weekend. Starts off on Thursday evening at P Vod, then on Saturday evening at the Midtown Cultural and Educational Center. And then back to Midtown on Saturday. So, you all come on out and support the ninth annual Fresh Book Festival. Also, by the time we meet again, we will have had our MLK celebration. And I know that we are, we're at some level of sponsorship with the MLK program. And my thought is, since that group is doing all of the work and we're contributing towards it, I think as a city, we should have what they're doing on our website to look like we're doing something. Because we are, we happen to pay for it. I would like to see something for MLK on our website. You know, it's a national holiday, recognizing a man who made a difference for all. And so, we just need to post what they got out there on our website. I'd like to see that. And also, speaking of literacy, Delta St. and Theta Sorority Incorporated is having a boot camp for children on January the eighteenth at Bethel Cookman College. Oh, that's my first degree. Bethel Cookman University, that's my third degree. And it's, it is for high school students. And it's, uh, it is for high school students to prepare them for college. They help them with their essays to get into college. They help them with financial paperwork and what have you. It's a day of, um, of preparation, college prep, uh, involving the lunch and what have you. And we would love for citizens to come out. It's free. Uh, this is a signature event that we do under our educational, uh, development and involvement facets. So I would love to see young people come out. We had a great turnout last year. And how many did we have last year? I don't recall the count, but it was so good. Other people asked us, could they join us? Nothing, the greatest opportunity you can get is when somebody else wants to do something that you're doing and we're partnering with some of the other organizations. Uh, but this one is our signature one. We're looking at one where we actually go back to middle school because it starts there. We're looking at high now, you know, it's almost too late for them if they're not ready. We're preparing the ones that are ready and helping those who aren't ready get ready. But if we start them at the middle school level, uh, with some type of boot camp to get ready with their writing and knowing what, um, uh, community service points they need to get and all the things they need to do to prepare them for the high school level, then they'll go to our next boot camp, which would be at that, at that level. Uh, Happy New Year. Glad to be here. Thank God that each and every one of you made it as well. Let's go to work.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Trager?
Uh, members of our beloved Daytona Beach Police Department will be having their award ceremony and I would like the chief to come up and speak a little bit about it, if he would. Too often these people go unappreciated and this is when we get a chance, they get a chance to shine and be rewarded, also the volunteers.
Yes, Friday, Cricket Creek Police Chief. Friday night's our annual award ceremony starts at six o'clock is the cocktail hour, light refreshment, seven to nine is the actual awards. We're giving out a lot of awards this year to a lot of volunteers and business owners in the city who helped us out, as well as Officer of the Year and, and different categories we have for officers, acknowledging some of the great work that's done every day by the men and women of our department. It's, this year it's going to be at the, uh, News Journal Center on Beach Street instead of the museum. We needed more space and we were able to get, uh, commandeer that place. So everybody's welcome. Invitations have been sent out and, uh, we're looking forward to another great night of honoring our, our men and women.
You guys got to tell me next year a little bit more in, in advance. Because I regret not being able to be there. It's one of the most inspiring evenings of the year. You know, my calendar gets booked up real quick. But it is one of the most inspiring when you hear the heroism of our officer. It sets you so long.
That's a great point. We need to probably get it out earlier. I'll make sure it happens. No, you're right. I got you.
But it is, it is, it's one of the most inspiring and appreciate everything y'all do.
Thank you very much.
Okay. That it?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to everyone. I, I think, um, you know, Commissioner, um, well, my brain froze. Uh, you made a good point about the education and my brain freezes. I mean, I think that's something that, uh, you know, I said it's probably one of the biggest things we could do to improve the quality of life, uh, for our future generation of residents. So I, I, I think, yeah, whatever we can do to enhance that, I don't know if, you know, extending some of the competitions or doing some sort of, you know, like they do the, the guns for shoes, maybe some sort of trading in of, you know, having kids read for, towards a reward and offering that year round or doing something. I don't know if we could get a deal on, um, ebook readers or something and use that to maybe enhance our library or do something. Maybe they'll get some, buy some ebook readers for our library and have them be loaned out on long-term. I don't know if they loan out those kinds of things, but anything that we could come up with like that would be, uh, I think that'd be a really indelible mark we could leave as a commission on the, in the minds of a lot of young people. I mean, I'm, I got in trouble for reading too much in school. I can't tell you how much reading has made a big difference in my life. And, uh, you know, the idea that kids might not have access to that is really a sobering thought. It's not, I mean, I really think about it until I came here. So I, I would love to see us do something like that. I don't know what initiatives we have that we can do as a city. I mean, there's so many worthy causes and so many great things and we have a limited budget. But if there's anything like that or we can do anything like that to enhance, I would like to put, I would like to put that as a priority for the, for the coming year and, uh, you know, try to get some more, um, I don't know if we have too much public-private partnership from some of the big government, uh, some of the big companies in that. But I mean, uh, you know, many of the corporations that are doing, you know, all the contributions they do, I mean, certainly they could do something to help us get, uh, ebook readers or do something like that. It's not, they're not terribly expensive. They're probably down to, I mean, they're probably down in the tens of dollars, I would imagine now. And if we have a library like ours that has the ebook capacity, I mean, you can have unlimited, unlimited access. So, um, you know, I, I think that'd be a really good program for us to do something like that. I don't know what it would, what it would cost, but, uh, you know, we do have a great library, you know, shockingly good library.
It really is.
And a lot of people don't even know about it. I don't know how many people have library cards even. I don't know what percentage of our citizenry have library cards, but, um, you know.
It's all that is, is a part of it. It's a large problem, but I don't think it's one that we, we have to take it, take on it incrementally and find ways to support, just say how, find ways to support literacy. Find ways to get, like you say, more, uh, books in kids' hands, but also find ways to encourage parents to engage their kids in literacy. Um, you know, and that's all a part of the, the mayor's literacy initiative. We do a lot of those sorts of things, uh, as it relates to getting books in the kids' hands, having authors come and be, have our kids exposed to those authors. Uh, and, you know, the sky's the limit, but I do believe that there's a, a large opportunity to create, there's so many types of programs. One of them is like in your restaurants. You want to encourage restaurants to have books inside of them. You, you, you have barbers in our community who offer programs like, uh, I know my son loves to go to this particular barber who pays him $2 to read a book in his chair. So if he sits in the barber's chair, the barber, you know, I pay him, but the barber gives him $2 back.
I'd bankrupt him.
Uh, and so there are just, you know, lots of programs and ideas like that that we have to find ways to support. Everything is not, is not completely about the city's money, but it has to be about the city's intentionality about addressing the issue. And, well, we have, uh, small library, uh, small libraries outside of Dickinson Center, Midtown. I helped a young lady when she, when she brought those to our, uh, to our community. And I see people using those. So we just have to find more and more ways to be, uh, a participant in this process and I appreciate it.
Well, I mean, I'm ashamed to say I've lived down in Daytona for 15 years and I, I don't know about a lot of these opportunities and options and I mean, I, I should. So again, that's just a part of educating people about what exists. I mean, I would, you know, I, I would not necessarily have known about some of the opportunities we have as a city. So I mean, that maybe the main thing is just, again, we've talked before about educating people about what the opportunities that exist even in our own city are, you know, and, and highlighting and spotlighting those businesses, like you said, that reward the kid. I'm sure there's businesses that would like pay for good grades and pay for reading and stuff like that. We just don't necessarily, I don't know how many of our average, uh, citizens know about those opportunities. So.
And, and, and the last thing I'll say is you want to figure ways to create more wifi access in these, uh, equity zones. So the people have access to wifi and then they'll have access to the library because that's all it takes.
Well, one of the things I looked at doing, um, because, you know, the, you can open up your wifi to other people and broadcast even free wifi. The part of the problem is just the technology. It's okay, I guess it's easier to send it out than for them to connect back. So then that's part of the issue. It's relatively easy, I guess, to blanket the area with wifi that goes out, but I guess it's, if there's, you know, it's harder for them to get back to it. But yeah, I mean, the city could certainly work on extending or providing, probably work out a deal with some providers to, you know, help do things like that. All of that stuff would be great. I, I think that's probably one thing that I think we could do a much better job is, is having some voice that educates the citizens about all the benefits that are available to them, just knowing what's out there. Cause there's not really one consolidated place where you can go to learn about all of these things. And that'd be a great, like a website or a FAQ or good use of social media even just to highlight one of these opportunities. So, you know, maybe that's something that we can do is use our social media to highlight, uh, like this barber shop or whatever. Cause I think that's a great, a great thing to do and just get people to buy into it more.
Well, I, I, my, my goal is to do one of the mayor, one of those, uh, one of the talk, talk shows where I go around and interview folks. I want to interview that barber.
Yeah, that's a great idea. That's a great idea. That's really exciting. I think that would be a really great thing to do. I look forward to, uh, 2020 next.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Um, I'll be brief. So I appreciate, um, chief, the police department moving toward cleaning up the waterways. So I really, I've, I've had some constituents, both business people and people who live in the beachside community, they're very happy that we're dealing with the issue. So thank you so much for that. As I flip through our brochure again, which I appreciate, the, uh, Tuesday, sorry, yeah, Tuesday, January 14th, we will be having an informational meeting regarding, um, Beach Street and some, some things happening on South Beach Street. It's for information. And a resident, and I sent this to the city manager, contacted me, asking me, you know, the notification process, how do we alert people with regard to things coming up that mattered to them? So Mr. Manager, we had a conversation about that. What is the best approach?
Well, we try to get it out everywhere. In fact, this is one example of a way that we get information out and includes a broad, you know, um, kind of a broad coverage of the many things that we're involved in. Um, so this is, uh, we, I don't know if we're still mailing them each, each publication, but we do mail these out, you know, the bills occasionally. Uh, the other is so, our webpage is the other way that we get the information out.
We actually mail this out? We mail this out?
We do, we do mail these, uh, I don't know if we're doing it every, uh, you know, or we're doing it, uh, just periodically, but we do mail these out.
Okay. I mean, I think it'd be interesting. No, I think.
Well, let's check see why you don't get it.
I think.
You get it.
Okay.
I get it. I know I got it at home.
I don't think I have. So, so the question is, it would be interesting.
Yeah. No, no, 335 Buckmail, yeah?
All right.
Wow.
I know we mail them out, but we'll see why it didn't get to everybody. But yeah, that's, that's the two primary ways we're getting stuff out right now.
So it's just interesting that we have, uh, quite a few, uh, community informational meetings coming out. So that is one of them and just finding a way to let people in. The second one, I mean, I look at this and I see at least two or three dates that people should be aware of, um, that would be beneficial to them to be seen in one time, maybe the month of Jan, and I know they can go to the website, but not everybody knows about the website or wants to, it's number one. So as I look again at my little flyer here, we had a conversation, Commissioner Gilliland, I think last time, about 2025 stuck in my mind about FDOT and East ISB. But did we say 2025 that we're going to start, finish? What was the deal there?
So the, the email notice they, they forwarded around said that the design work would be done at the end of this year.
Okay.
So the next phase would be the right-of-way acquisition.
Okay.
Um, so the design's done, they gotta go before a judge, figure out the property they have to take, um, get a judge to approve it, then they start taking the property. Uh, at that point then they've got to, you know, get into the construction. So, uh, so let's see, 21, 22?
Yeah, when does construction start, do you think?
Uh, it should start sometime in 21.
Okay, so that being the case, I would like to know, do we, I know we always have these plans on the shelf somewhere. There's always studies we've done and whatnot. So I would like to know, do we have one for the East ISB corridor? Do we have something that the commission thought this, do we ever have one done that's 10 years old? Don't care how old it is, just do we have anything so that if they're moving in 2021 and we're not prepared for what goes along with that, it's going to be difficult. It's gonna take longer.
Land use, uh, changes.
Like the E-zone master plan? And I don't know that we ever did anything since I was on commission, which is 14 years ago. We've never done a, a, a master plan for East ISB. As a matter of fact, the chamber offered to raise funds to do something. That was their idea and I told them emphatically, do not do it. They do not do any good for anybody.
So, you know.
If you did, if you did a study to determine land values and, and uses that would be appropriate adjacent to, uh, uh, that corridor, uh, from the river to the ocean, uh, that may have some value if, uh, if they're intent to acquire it, you know, for, uh, public use and private use.
What I don't want to see happening is that they start with FDOT and then, and then we play catch-up and now we're behind even further. So to Commissioner Henry's point, you know, people come to Daytona Beach, they don't want to go to our school systems, let's say, right? They come down East ISB and they don't want to come and live here and they avoid this area. And I've heard this from residents, I've heard this from families and I've heard this from, uh, business people. So that impacts us, but I just don't want it to be a situation, and I don't think any of us want this, where we start one phase of construction with FDOT and then we could have saved money by working in conjunction with them. And we try to figure out a nice plan. Like the chamber hypothetically still wanted to be involved in that and let's say a study was done and they offered to pay for it, that would be interesting for me, Mr. Cameron. I'm just putting it out there. Is that something the chamber would entertain? You don't know?
Seriously, I can't speak, you know, I mean, you know, for my boss and stuff. You'd have to talk with my boss.
That's all right.
What the chamber did was they, they raised, they did raise money and they developed that, that flyover of ISB.
Sure.
And I think it actually kind of started up near the Alamo, the ISB and then all the way to the ocean.
Right.
So that was, that was what they did with sort of conceptual ideas as to what might happen over there. But, you know, of, of all the plans that have been done going back way before I was on the commission, the only one that ever looked, it looks like it might, something might come of it is going to be Beach Street and it's only because the Browns are going to pump $1 million.
But Beach Street is happening and I.
Because the Browns are pumping a hundred million.
Sure, and that's okay. But I still think there would be value for us and I'm not sure if one can consider, but how would we go about just prepping ourselves and understanding what is the value of that land? What can we do? How many parcels are there? Who's involved in it? Because we don't actually know right now. It's all speculation. But if we're going to do something there, I feel as though preparation is key.
We'd have to have a study that, uh, studies the land uses and, and the value of the land is really want to get behind a program of, of changing that character, uh, much like we've done in, you know, other areas of the city.
So come over the bridge, you know, we own the property on the, sorry, go ahead. Uh, we own the property, you know, on the south side.
On the south side.
Half of the block, uh, the Bit Orks own most of that block.
Right.
Um, and then we own, you know, the, the, the corner that had the old gas station and the, uh, you know, in the strip club there up at, up at ISB, I'm sorry, A1A and ISB. Then we have just the corner across the street and then Eddie Hennessy had a lot of property right there. Then it's a lot of individual owners between there and, uh, when you get down to the river and that Blue Water Project was, you know, has all the property down there, you know.
And so, I mean, it's great that we have a sense of who owns what. Do we know how much they want to sell it for? Do we know how the land can be used? Do we know if they want to go ahead and if they want to sell their land? Do they want to hold tight? Do they want to hold us back from moving forward? I mean, how do we go about getting that information?
The guys that have the property, when you come over the bridge on the north side, they are, Merrill's their attorney, they were moving forward with Marina Project, they've got all caught up in something they're doing in South, in Daytona Beach shores, but they're still local, they're still around here doing projects. Um, they are from out of town. Bit Orks wanted a hundred times what he paid for his property to, to do something with.
So that's.
Our property is our property.
But that's not a number.
And then Eddie's trying to get, you know, he's trying, he wants to do something meaningful over there.
Sure.
And he could have sold the screen line and gotten his money back, but he, that wasn't what he was looking to do. So, you know, I, I think that he's probably the, if you, if, if somebody's going to be a catalyst for projects to go forward over there, it's Eddie Hennessy.
Right. Right. So, again, it's all speculation, we kind of have numbers. So, again, what can we do? Is there anything we can do? Or do we just not do anything? I mean, that's.
We can, we can, Mr. Barrett, we can work on a, on a plan to, to have a concept of development of the area, that's a reasonable.
Yeah, because the bottom line is, we're not gonna do it.
Mm-hmm.
We have to create an environment that supports it. But, it's just like he said, Ms. Hyde Brown and Ron Brown decided to build a building for $70 million. Other people decide they wanna come and piggyback off of that. One of the few things that, you know, I would say that, you know, a lot of what took place out of LPGA, we did help stimulate that, uh, through incentives and things of that nature. Uh, but, you talk about ISB, someone is gonna have to come in, and even there, you know, you had to have someone who was willing to invest. And, and I think it's been the best return of any stimulation that we've done, that's where we got the best return from out there.
And so, and so I agree with you, you know, we're, I agree with the idea that we need outside investors, but it would behoove us to have some sort of packet of information saying, and this is what it is. That would be a really good, and especially since you're saying more people are gonna be coming in from Tanger, from the project on Beach Street, so let's be prepared for that eventuality, if it is when it comes, actually.
So, what are you suggesting?
I would like to know if we could have a study done, in terms of, not a huge one, we've done studies before.
Yeah, you scared me when you said study.
Well, let me be clear, I'd like staff to take a look at, if possible, and they can do this, um, the value of the land, who owns the land, and have it ready in case somebody comes forward and says, what do you think, Mr. Chisholm?
I agree with that.
Yeah, and that's something staff can put together.
FDOT, I forgot the name of their consultant, the company that's doing the design, they should have every piece of that.
Do we have?
We just, we just gotta ask for it.
Okay, so again, the reason I'm bringing this up is because so far, other areas of the city are doing really well. Everybody has investment coming to them, we've got Midtown as things happening, it's very exciting, West Side has things, Beach Street has things. Beachside needs to get just a little bit of what is going on here, and East ISB is a countywide issue for us. It's not just Daytona Beach, it's the entire county is speaking about it. So, this is why it's become important to us. And since it's no longer 2025 and it's 2021, it becomes more pressing for us in terms of being prepared. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Barrett, there is some, some information available, some we have, and then we may need to get additional information, but why don't I bring back something that might make some, uh, give us a catalyst for deciding if we're gonna do anything else or not?
And I, I would like to know what some of those real values are. I, I don't know what they are, I'd like to know, so that's one of the issues. Um, the other thing is, Mr. Jagger, I have a question for you. Is it possible, and I'm not sure if it's legal, so that's why I'm asking you, when people have code violations and they pay for it, they have a fine and it's paid for, can that money be put back into code to support some of the projects that Chief Capri has in terms of helping people to improve the properties that they had, other ones with code fines?
This is really a budgetary question, which I'm gonna pass off to the manager.
Is that possible?
It's a question of what to do with the money, what you have it, and that, that's a function of your budget.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we could do that, uh, we would have to have a public purpose for whatever we, you know, wanna put the money at.
I mean, it's not, it's not affecting any other money, it's not taking money away from the city that's already allocated, it's money that people are paying as fines, that we could then, from listening to you, we could then use to help people who don't have the funds to fix the homes that are in disrepair. And so, this could help to offset it, but we're not actually touching our existing funds at all. It's just a thought.
That and or demolition?
Pardon me?
That and or demolition?
Yeah, exactly, because that is impacting us. But, I'm just piggybacking off what was said earlier in terms of people who are, you know, who just cannot afford to fix their properties, why not use it?
So, we, we do currently have certain grant programs, we can expand on those grant programs, uh, as such as with the manager saying.
And the grant programs, though.
Quite, your question's a source of funds. I'm sorry.
So, that your question's really a source of funds for additional grant programs?
Right.
Um, and we do currently have some grant programs.
Right.
Um, so again, this is more of a policy question.
So, we couldn't, I'm just curious, what we could do is we say we have existing programs in place, right? And the money that's paid to code, we could just take a percentage of that and put them back into those and kind of fuel our grant programs that way?
Well, it's, it's a little more complicated, just that.
Right.
I mean, it's, uh, if we wanna, yeah, if we wanna set up a program to provide a stimulus for, for improvements in a, in a particular area, then we oughta go ahead and set that up and determine how much money we wanna put into the program and, and set up the conditions for it. And we do have grant programs that do that.
Sure. Now, I actually specifically wanted to know, can it come from code? Can it come from code fines? Because where does that money go now?
It can come from code.
I don't, I don't, I don't think it matters where it comes from.
Okay.
We have to say what our priorities are. We establish our priorities and we, we establish what we believe the policies of the city should be.
Okay.
And then we charge the manager with helping us to reach that as a goal. So, if it's a goal, it's a goal.
Okay.
So.
Well, I'd like us to consider doing that, then, if we could take it from code or use it as, I mean, I know that code has to be, hopefully, if they're funding their own services, if, in some way. And then if we can, bolster our existing programs to help offset some people who cannot afford to do some things.
Well, we're getting, we're, this is January, so it's almost time for us to do our strategic planning, and I, I think that you're saying that that's a priority. That, that's something that is one of the priorities that you have, along with East ISB. Because a lot of what you're saying, you're talking about tonight are things that you wanna see done, and that's how we.
Well, I'm not sure it's necessarily me, but I, it's not necessarily me personally, uh, what it really is, it's listening to the commission say, and listening to people not at the commission, hearing to outside business entities say, and residents say, over and over again, we'd like to see something happening, both with code and with East ISB. So, that's how I'm approaching.
But, but it is you, though, at the end of the day.
Sure, I represent them, yes, 100%. And so, yes, I am representing that particular concern, 100%, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so, also, um, could we get a report on how many lights are out? And so, the city manager and I were speaking, and I said, I love that we have lights on Beach Street, I think it looks really good, but we're being charged for lights that are out throughout the city, do we continue paying for them, sir?
We have a, we have a, we, we try to identify all the lights and report them to Port of Power and Light, uh, and try to get recognition for those, those lights until they get, get fixed.
Okay, and then finally.
But, I can't get a report back to you identifying the number of lights that are out.
Super, okay, good. And then finally, I sent an email to FPL because for one year, I've been requesting the light changes happened on Main Street, and apparently, they occurred in November, as per FPL, they went to LED lights. And so, I kept asking for confirmation, and that's the confirmation I got. But, that took us a while, but I appreciate the fact that it's now done, and that it appears to be brighter on Main Street, so the work was done. All right, so thank you so much, and that was it.
Well, Nova Road continues to be pitch dark as well, down there by Nova Glen, that strip between Bellevue and Bevel is still dark, we, we talked about that a couple of weeks ago, it's extremely dark, and that's a major thoroughfare.
Bellevue and?
Between Bellevue and Bevel on Nova Road.
Yeah.
By A.
Yeah, there's no lights at all.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Pitch black.
Commissioner Gilliland?
Uh, so following, on one thing there, so if this is a police fine forfeiture fund, dollars, it's restricted, but, but just to confirm, a code fine is not, does not have the same restriction?
Mind saying those code fines go to the general fund, if it's a forfeiture, those are dedicated to the police department.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that.
Back to the point, I think, I know you were wanting to tie the code to it, but in reality, you need to, we just need to identify the program.
Yeah.
And then what funded, what are the funds we have?
Yeah, because those code, that, those code fines are funding something at this point, so if we allocate it to that, we're taking it away from something else. So, right now, it's not as clear, once it gets into the general fund swamp, you know, it's not exactly sure what, what it paid for. But, um, but that is actually, uh, when I met with you when you were running, that was something that you were very interested in doing, and it, I thought it was a great idea then, I think it's a great idea now. So, you know, it's some, certainly something I think that would be worth going on my list as a, you know, at least in the redevelopment areas, is to have a, um, probably, I'm trying to remember our conversation was this long ago, I think it was two, it was two things, it was a, a first time for a homebuyer assistance type grant you could get, and then a, a home improvement type grant as well.
And we do have, we do have an assistance program for first time buyers, but the improvement thing, it's, it's, would speak to so many issues here that we're bringing up.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, let's see, the, uh, so E- East ISB, you know, that one, um, we, we do have a risk over there that as they widen it to the north, they're gonna stay within the existing sort of envelope of the road, but there's already properties over there, like that old gas station's been closed forever with the car wash next to it, that property's not very deep, you know, north-south. So, um, you know, it, it changed hands and somebody sold about 500 gas stations, and that thing was in that bucket of 500 stations. So, I don't know, who knows owns it now, Gigi Gallaway might know. But, um, you know, it is, there, there's some properties over there that are gonna have some redevelopment problems because they're of the, the size of the properties involved. Um, you know, so there may need, we may need to think about how to be creative and, um, you know, Ruth brings up a good point, um, often about not moving properties and figuring out how to do something with them, uh, when, particularly when it's infill. So, that's something else that probably needs to be part of that discussion. You know, how do we make it something that's, that, that will encourage people to invest in that area and be able to, be able to do something? Um, let's see, so TPO exec we had last Friday, uh, there's something odd going on at FDOT, you know, as I mentioned, the, the district secretary left, we've got an interim gentleman now, I believe his last name's Purdue, and they have put out a policy that's very odd because, you know, we, we run into a lot of cost overruns when these projects finally make it up the list, five, 10 years after they were put on the list. Every year, the, the sponsors of the project update their, their cost estimates, but it's not uncommon for us to have someone come back that, that has a, at least a 10 or 20% increase, if not like a 50 or 60% increase. So, what we typically do, because it changes our priorities, we have to take money that we thought would go towards the project further down the list and assign it to a project that's number one, because it's $100,000 over budget. Uh, what they've done now is they've basically said that they're gonna send us a notice when something's over budget, and we have, the TPO has two days to respond, or they're just gonna program and assume that we don't care. So, with it, in, in event, what it really does is it means that our, our prioritizing projects really won't mean much of anything in the future. So, this is another one of these battles, I think I mentioned, um, in this forum, six, eight months ago, by the way, I wanted to change the, the LAP program, the local agency or local area program, and, uh, it was basically to put us out, out of the business, so only counties will be able to afford to do it, they're gonna be so limiting on what you could use the funds for, and we get a lot of LAP dollars coming to Daytona Beach, we're LAP certified. Only Daytona Beach and the county of Volusia are LAP certified in Volusia County. So, that one, we fought on, and, and they, they backed off quite a bit on that, uh, but this may be another one where it's gonna have some negative consequences if we're not careful. Uh, right now, they, they're, they're telling us that they have a written policy about this change, but it will have some critical down effects, and you'll see a lot of projects slow down if we, if they just kind of, you know, railroad this through. It's very surprising this is happening under the watch of interim district secretary, because it is such a big change. Um, and then lastly, and I hate to be, you know, kind of just on a somber note, but the, uh, uh, there's been a couple of losses that, that in the community, um, you know, the old GE plant, there was a woman that, that was the, the right hand of the general manager out there for many, many years, Lori Gallagher, their family owned, it Florida Sports were, actually still owns it over on the Bellevue extension, uh, she actually, they live across the street from me, she passed away a couple of Fridays ago, but somebody's been in, in institution in this, in my neighborhood for a very long time. Um, right before that, uh, Terry Henry, retired Army General, uh, was with the county of Volusia Public Works for non, well, many, many years, uh, was on the evac board, another guy, very, very connected in the community, uh, just a great public servant, both in his time in the, in the military and his time with the county, uh, he passed away as well. And then, uh, last Saturday, this is the last one, um, the gentleman who had my seat from 1974 to 1995, 21 years.
Really?
Wayman Etheridge passed away. And he had been battling some health issues for a long, long time, and it was a hell of a fight he put up, but it was unfortunately one he wasn't gonna be able to win. And, uh, he's somebody that was, when I first ran for office in '05, a bunch of people got together, uh, you know, him, Larry Kelly, George Burden, uh, General Henry, uh, you know, a handful of other folks, Mickey McClellan, which put me people, people from my neighborhood, and they basically kind of sat me down, it was, it felt like it was like a, like it was a fraternity hazing type of thing. They put me in a chair, and they all sat in front of me, hammered me in questions, and, no, that's wrong, that's, the answer's too long, no, don't call, just call it that. And, but it was, it, it really kind of was baptism by fire on how to, how to be a public servant, particularly in Daytona Beach. And, you know, he's the guy, as I said, for 21 years, he, you know, he was, he was the commissioner for the west side of Daytona Beach. And, uh, honestly, since then, you had Burden had it for, for eight years, uh, Glenn had it for two, and I've had it ever since. So, go, I mean, that's only four of us have had the seat since 1974. So, uh, it, it's a tremendous loss, you know, he was a pharmacist in the community, um, for many decades, fif, I think 50 years. Um, you know, he, uh, checkered flag, you know, you name it, he was, he was involved with it, but just another, you know, uh, unavoidable but, but tragic loss for the community for somebody who did, who's done so much. Um, you know, it was funny, I was out at the golf course on Sunday, and the, the clubhouse restaurant out there, you know, has our, our brass plaque on it, and in 1982, 1984, it was dedicated, uh, you know, Larry was the mayor and, and Wayman was, was the, one of the commissioners. You know, so it was, you know, you, you know, his, uh, uh, legacy will live on for a very, very long time in this community, and all of things that happened, you know, to kind of drag us up from the, the doldrums that we'd gotten into back in the 70s, uh, you know, he was a major part of that. And, uh, you know, I will certainly miss, miss all of them, um, but, you know, Wayman's somebody who was extremely special to me because of the things he taught me about being in public office and, and, you know, how important it is to make good decisions when you sit up here that are, that are, you know, good for the many, not good for the few. So.
Well, thank you for sharing that, and I, um, didn't know him as well, although I knew him well. Uh, he was our commissioner, uh, all of those years. Uh, and, you know, my mom worked at GE, and so a lot of the people who lived out there, uh, and as I shared earlier, um, he and Larry Kelly were neighbors, uh, on Barbara Drive, we grew up down around the corner on Thunderbird, but, um, his service was, is greatly appreciated by all, and, uh, I knew him even as mayor, and he still loved Daytona Beach, he still was greatly concerned about us, uh, even up until when I last saw him about two years ago, uh, and about all the things that we were doing. Um, and so, thanks for sharing that, and our condolences as a community certainly goes out to his family. Uh, thanks. Um, Mayor's Fitness Challenge started on last night, and we had a enthusiastic crowd that's larger than any that we've ever had, and we already have over 135 people, 137 people signed up, which is more than we've ever had and we hope to have. You can still sign up, uh, on Saturday morning, our first session will take place at the YSG Von Scarlet Golden Center, starts at 8:30. Uh, we will have line dancing with Lisa, I am not permitted to dance in public, but I do, will be there to encourage, uh, all of our participants, and I am the number one cheerleader because I believe that this is an important part of equity, and to see this project grow from where it was to where it is now, uh, is, is phenomenal, and certainly, we're gonna have another great year. I have already lost eight pounds, but, it's eight, but those eight pounds do not count in the challenge. I have another goal of 10 more, and I think if I get to 10, I might be in the lineup of champions. So, that's my goal, we'll see how we do. Most of the years that we've done this, I've gained weight. So, uh, it, it's really not just about that, but I wanna encourage everyone, uh, it's a great way to move, to exercise, to learn about nutrition, and to find out about differing parts of our community and places that you can move that don't necessarily cost money, and it's a great way to meet friends. We have, at least half of our people have been coming for years, and that's the mark, I think, of a great, uh, program, is when people come back year after year, and then they bring friends and, uh, drag out family members. Um, and finally, I will mention just briefly about the, um, what was written, I guess, about the shelter and the safe zone and, uh, part of this idea, I will simply say that the board members of First Step had a meeting tonight, and there is absolutely zero tension from the members of the board as it relates to this, and the city as it relates to this First Step shelter. Uh, when I say zero, it's zero. Uh, we, the board members, uh, never expected or anticipated that the city would pay for a shelter. I never supported that. Have always said to the board members, the safe zone, I've always said to the members that I believe that it is the responsibility of the shelter to figure a way to create a safe zone. It's not the responsibility of the city to do that. And so, we had a discussion, and we'll figure a way to, to do something that's reasonable and that makes everyone happy. Most of the people who opined on that issue were not privy to the many discussions that the board has had over the last six months as it relates to a safe zone. And the reality is that when we decided that we really wanted a safe zone, by the time that issue came to the city manager, it was already the knife out. We were almost done with the, with the construction. I guess he lamented on whether he could find a way to pay for it, but I had already was on record with them saying that this is not something that the city of Daytona Beach should pay for, for a number of reasons. And so, I think that the article was really a whole bunch about, about, about nothing, although those who are elected have a right to share their opinion, I don't think that they were informed or had spoken to their representatives on the board to see what their opinion of the board was and where we stood. So I, I feel very good about where the shelter is and the work that is currently being done. Let's all remember that First Step is, has to grow up, and it will have many issues that have to be addressed. And we have to, as a, as a commission, continue to be very supportive of the process. We've been working on this for eight years, eight years that we've been working on the shelter. And so, the idea that we would cut a ribbon and open the building and all of the issues would be solved at that moment is, is, you know, a foolhardy at best. So let's continue to be supportive and to work, work hard to, to make the shelter a success, and to be assured that, you know, there are members of our community who are out to create a rationale for various purposes that are not necessarily to benefit the shelter. And a lot of times, they will, you know, throw the name of the city and try to turn the city of Daytona Beach or the city commission against the city manager, things of that nature. You know, we have enough reasons to fight with our manager and fuss with him, and I'm sure we all do that in our own way, but we have more reasons to work together. And I'm of the opinion that even this issue as it relates to a safe zone, if we sit down and we work it out, we talk it out, we'll figure a way to, to, to solve it in a way that will help our partners to stay with us. Because the one thing we don't want to do is just to figure out a way to run off the people who are, have committed to it, and we got to, the board is working well together, and we're very happy with the executive director and the work that she's doing. So let's continue to push forward. Do you have anything, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to say one thing, since that was the focus of some adverse comments about the, the shelter, I don't think anybody here is any more supportive of that shelter than I am. And I don't think that, that I have done anything that was contrary to any of the decisions you or this board has made or has desired for me to make in that process. And I reluctantly have a difficult time with the reporting that occurred and the false information that was put forward and purposely attacking me as the manager of the city. I was offended by it, and I don't take offense to any of the elected officials who were asked, asked questions without having knowledge of the information in the background, but I do take issue with the editorial group of the paper and, and their approach at attacking the manager without them even having the, the courtesy of researching the issue and having valid information to attack me on.
How about the fact, how about the fact that they didn't put their name on it?
Right.
They, they hid behind editorial board, the cowards over there wouldn't even come out and say which one of them printed all those lies.
I've never seen such journalism that was so blatantly emulated and to a point of, I thought was, it did the, the paper a disservice in the way that they approached it. But, Mr. Mayor, we have good things ahead of the city, and 2020 is going to be a great year for Daytona Beach, and the shelter is open, it is providing service, and we do have people that are going to benefit from the efforts of this city and the county in, in putting that shelter together. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have for the season.
Okay. As a point of clarification, I guess I'll also say that the Shelter Board lamented, really for the better part of a year, as to how to address a safe zone, so it, it was a long process. But the reality is that initially, the, the shelter was to be a come as you are, but the board also decided that they didn't want to simply open the shelter up to anyone who came. And that in itself also made it impossible for it to just open potentially compliant. But those were, a lot of those were, were decisions made by the board that the board even acknowledged tonight during our meeting. So, you know, there's a lot of information, and, and we have a lot to deal with, but let's continue to fight and push forward and try to make our city a better place. This meeting is adjourned, we'll take public comment starting right now.
Speaker tonight is John Nicholson, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. A couple of things, one, with the, it was on the agenda, Jersey Rogers House, hopefully we will repair it and paint it after it's moved. It wasn't mentioned, but I'm assuming that we will do that. Secondly, the boardwalk, there's a light out. The last time the boardwalk had a light out, it took a little over two years to get it turned back on. I'm hoping that, Jim, we will work a little bit more diligently. This one fell apart, so they don't even have the light bulb to change. So I'm asking you to kind of push it so it doesn't sit there like that for two or three years. Also, A1A, it's been four, maybe five years since the majority of our lights on A1A are out. I'm asking you to, I know, I understand you're working with Florida Parent Life, but it doesn't take four years to make a decision, so we need those. It makes the area look bad. We've been hearing the money spent on Midtown, on Downtown, on their roads, on their sidewalks. There have been no general funds spent on B-side since, I don't know, 1820s or whatever it was, but it's been a while. Almost all the funds come out of the CRA. Everything we've done is CRA funding. The ISB is going to be CRA funded and plus the government. I'm asking that north or south Ocean Avenue be redone. I mean, if we're going to expect four new hotels on that road, it has to be done. It's not compliant now. We don't have a sidewalk on one side, and it's impossible to maneuver it on the other side. Schools, I was shocked and surprised that you guys talked about schools. Thirty years ago, I talked about it, and I was told, "It's none of our business. The school board does it, we don't, we don't care about it." I talked to Scarlett Golden about having reading teachers at our leisure services facilities, and she said, "No, there's no need for it." The school board has half-day reading teachers at our schools. They're only there half a day. So I asked the city just to supplement it with reading teachers at our schools, and that's when Charles Cherry decided that there was a woman doing a daycare center in our hut housing, and that he would no longer support it with city funds. ISB was Suzanne Kewen. In the 95, there is a, a, a program for what was going to go on Suzanne Kewen. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is Bill Field.
Happy New Year, Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Peach Street. We're now in 2020. The law has been accomplished last year. We now have our First Step Shelter, and there are people living in it, it has been built. It took us a long time to get there, but we are now there. We have Brown and Brown, who, who is going to create a lot of jobs by being here on B Street, but there is still room for improvements. We have people sitting here on this commission that's not accessible. It's been put on the Facebook about these people walking out the meeting while the people get up here to speak. We have pictures of them walking out of the meetings. We never had this before. When Scarlett Golden was here, when Kelly was here, we never had, even when Carbonella was here, this is the first. So it looks really bad, because these people sat here until the meeting was over, and they addressed our issues, and right now, we don't even have that. I'm getting a lot of complaints about Zone Six. We had a lunatic that came up to me and threatened my life that lived in my neighborhood in the Gasket House. He went over and banged on the Forster's girl window. We have no protection when people come up to you. And we did, the police did come, and they came and hauled him away, because he's threatening people's lives, he's going across, he has a mental problem. He's been living there in that house for some time. And so, they came and they hauled him away, but he's back over there now in the house. So a lot of residents are coming to me saying that the commissioner for Zone Six, Ms. Reed, is not accessible. She has not met with them. I know once she had a meeting with me, she didn't show up, and then she said, "Oh, let's reset the meeting," but she never reset it. So in 2020, we want you to be more accessible to your constituents. You are here to do the people's work. We need you to make sure you're doing that, the same thing with you, Mayor Hendry. People are saying the same thing. Our other people was always accessible. Glenn Ritchie always met with me anytime of day or night, Margie, what do you need? And he would open up his doors and let us in. So I say to you, this is 2020, we want you to be here to do the.
671-8071, 405-47. Daytona Beach, call me anytime, hendryd@codv.us. Love to talk to my residents. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Bill Field, and on deck is Ken Strickland.
Hi, Bill Field, 211 Mulally Street. I'd like to thank the commission and the planning board. Been putting a lot of work into the dormitory living situation. I know it's a hard one. A lot of the issues, I'm one of the residents in Commissioner May's zone that has a problem with those houses. We've got three of them right now on our street. Commissioner Delgado, you were talking about, you know, blended couples, things like that in, in an apartment. I think these are two different things, really. That is a typical rental where it's leased on a monthly basis or a yearly basis or something like that, and you don't have people moving out, another person coming into that group three weeks later. In this situation, it's more they're renting these things by the week, and they're renting them per person. It's not, they're not renting the whole establishment, they're renting it per person, which kind of makes it sort of like a hotel or motel, I would think, and that may be the angle to attack it from, because I seriously doubt that they're paying those hotel motel taxes. They may not even be paying sales taxes. They probably don't have a business license, because that's how I came into this. I came down to the permits department to find out how many were allowed on the street, and I found out they weren't, they weren't allowed at all. If they're not getting permits, they're not getting business licenses, they're not paying taxes, that may be the way to look at it. Thank you.
That's just, that's just completely illegal, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Yes, you can.
Ken Strickland, Halifax, Daytona Beach. First Step Board, First Step Shelter debacle, you know, we came in with a component for a come as you are and a safe zone, both of those have basically disappeared, especially the come as you are component. I've attended many of those meetings, First Step Shelter Board, I've listened to hours of discussions of First Step Shelter issues, only to find out at the next meeting that Mr. Chisholm has either overruled or changed some of those decisions that were made down there, and you lost two really good board members over that type of stuff. The safe zone debacle has, has created over the $150,000 estimate to fix that or to build that, has put in a, put in another deal there where some of the other cities have mentioned, and I think they will go through with it. If, if we don't get a safe zone, they'll quit participating, because that was a component when this first, this thing was first brought up. And without that, they have every right to walk away, and that $150,000 will balloon into much more money, because the city will have to pick up the slack if those people abandon you as partners. Yes, you talked about it, take, working on this for eight years. I personally don't think that eight years to build a shelter of that size is anything to be proud of. It's taken a very long time. They're going to put up a million square foot warehouse over in Deberry in about nine months. There's no reason it should have taken this long. Not only that, it brought in the Dirty Dirt deal that's going on out there with PNS paving, and we need an audit of that, and the cost increases and all the delays have occurred under Mr. Chisholm's watch and direction, and he works for you guys, and he makes you look a little silly when he does things like this, and y'all don't bring it up or reprimand him about it, or get control of him. Please remove him.
Our next speaker is Patricia Hurd, and on deck is Jenny Nazak.
Happy New Year, everybody, two and a half minutes. First of all, Patricia Hurd, 822 Vernon Street and all of that. First of all, it would be nice if you all would use your microphone when you speak and not just hold conversations. Number two, I'm still concerned about the 18-wheelers and mobile homes parked in the neighborhood. Mobile homes parked on this, in the backyard, which means, and I know, that people are living in them. And property, properties around in our, my neighborhood, overgrown. I've been out there, my family's been there since 601. I used to stand on the porch and can see all the way down to Fremont. Now trees and things have grown up. What can be done about that? I am really, really concerned, and hopefully I can speak to someone, about exempting parking on Dr. MMBB. I will be here on January 22nd for many reasons, probably, but I'm concerned about, I don't understand it, maybe I don't understand it, the parking being exempt on the north and south side of MMBB between Ridgewood and Martin Luther King. That was to be discussed on January 22nd, but I just want to know about it before then. Yes, I'm concerned about children literacy, but to improve their literacy, guess what we must do? We're going to have to reach out to the parents, or the caretakers. We got to teach them. I say many years ago, and I retired 12 years ago, believe it or not, that young people are having babies, and they are not being taught, okay? And many years ago, I talked about the darkness between Bellevue and Belvo, and there on the corner. Not only there, but there are many places in Midtown that we have good trees and everything, overgrown trees in the yard. Bring some LED lights in that neighborhood, the people need to catch, right? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak, and on deck is Jim Schultz.
Jenny Nazak, 501 Harvey. I really want to thank everybody for bringing up this housing discussion, the, the number of people in a house, and especially Commissioner Delgado for trying to encourage some more creativity and flexibility. I understand this, this horrific situation of people crammed into sheds, and like nine or 10, or however many people crammed into a house, and if, especially if each of them has a car, like how horrific that can be. But there's got to be a happy medium, and I don't really think that if we raise it to three or four people, then houses with nine people in them are suddenly going to think they can get away with 13, or like, like that. I don't think that's really going to happen. I do think, in our, in our city, we have a housing crunch. In a city with a housing crunch, is it so terrible for a house with six bedrooms to have six people in it? Is it bad for a house with, for a guy living in a four-bedroom house, who's a senior citizen, and maybe his wife died? Is it bad for him to rent out the other three bedrooms of his house? Is that not okay? And, you know, I do have a stake in this issue. I'm a, a single woman who owns a house, and I would like to have two housemates without, like violating the law of the city. You know, I have a housemate now. And also, what happens when a person has visitors? Like if a person has family come stay, or friends come stay for a week, and there's briefly four people in their house? Are they going to get written up? I mean, how's that going to work? But I really, I, but bottom line, I really want to applaud Commissioner Delgado's effort to try to, I know, yeah, it might end up being 800 pages, no, it's not going to be 800 pages, but there is a lot of variables, like how many cars, you know, how many bedrooms and that. I have to say, when I have a housemate, I aggressively seek out housemates who don't have cars. It's like, those things take up space.